Yeah, let's approve the agenda as presented.
I second move.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Approve the minutes from last meeting.
I second move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay.
How about this, Chris?
Don't fall over and faint. I didn't get this today's done. I need, you have that outside sheet for me. Tonight I'll take that home. Close it there. No bills to be... Huh?
It's in there.
It's in my box. No bills to be paid?
Oh, yeah.
Always can't get it.
Probably last because we have a quick meeting.
Always bills be paid, Rick, or Steve? Sorry, Rick, I didn't mean to do that.
Oh, oh, you apologize to him. Francis, go ahead.
After all on air, everyone's good.
What's that Swartz Cup CPR for?
For the lifeguards.
That's the lifeguards we do every year.
Yeah.
They gotta be trained in CPR. She comes in and trains the whole group and...
Oh, well, I learned it.
Yeah.
Dean's already prepared. What do we fix?
That's the little boom truck had a...
That tree deal, we get reimbursed on that, do we?
How much was that, Francis?
Twenty-one...
Thirty-eight.
Twenty-one thirty-eight.
That's just what he told me.
Yeah, he billed us exactly what he said it would.
Transmission.
Yeah.
How many trees?
Gary asked a question. The trees you see on there, there's two of them. Thirteen hundred and fifty bucks is about what it comes up to. That's all, that'll all come back in a grant from the DNR.
How many trees did you plant?
Fifteen.
No kidding?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get, it'll be thirty to forty-five days before we get that check, but we'll get it back and we'll put it back.
I figured that's what he had set up, but he saw that.
Yeah, it went pretty good this year, actually, even though it was kinda muddy.
What kid come to me and said that whoever that city guy is was busting his butt to make sure it got dug right and deep and...
Yep.
Huh?
That's what we do.
Well, that's what you're supposed to do.
Any questions for Francis? I don't see anything out of the...
No, I...
Ordinary.
I moved and paid the bills.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the bills to be paid. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Okay. Discuss and approve old business. The only thing I'm gonna ask is, will we have the cemetery looking decent by the weekend?
It don't rain a lot.
It's supposed to rain, what, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Thursday night, one fifty, fifty, three percent chance.
That's what's grown if we did it today by Friday.
Yeah, it looked like crap.
That's the problem that you run into, you know, you try to, you try to get it done and then...
Ahead of time and then it rains and yeah, I understand that.
I mean, I did mine Thursday night before, because I've even gone this weekend, I come back Sunday and it's out and it's mowing.
Yeah, yeah, see, I moved mine Saturday. Actually, I should mow again today, so...
Well, this cool weather should help slow it down a little.
Okay.
A little.
I wanna try to start mowing tomorrow when I get it straight.
Okay, look at there, they showed up early for me. Anything else in the old business, Chris, other than the wells put to bed, it's done?
No, I have nothing in the old business.
Discuss and approve pool lifeguards. Megan, turn her up.
I picked up sheets for the guys. Are their name and then the year that they worked at the pool and then their age and their other summer commitments. Because this year we had to hire ten, where we've done eight before, but we had to do the extra two because so many other ones have commitments and we didn't have enough new ones.
Thank you.
Yep.
We did get, we snuck one away from Odego, didn't we? We had an Odego girl here that's on here, isn't it? And there an Odego girl?
Savannah Harms is from Odego, but she didn't ever work at their pool. She has worked at the beach in previous years and I think she worked at Sac City one year.
But we got an outside girl coming.
Yep.
And the only reason we got an outside girl is because there was nobody in Wall Lake that was applying.
Oh, yeah.
We, we struggled, didn't we this year?
Yeah, we did.
For applications.
Yeah.
Any questions for Megan? Lindsay, anything to add?
Not about the guards. Just the pool in general for the, I know Megan has talked to Chris about the cover, the solar cover that we, Megan is gonna put on this year 'cause it literally flakes off in the pool and debris plugs the filters. So I got a little stand from Acco this afternoon. He gave me a call back and was not able to send Chris a...
Bid?
Yeah, bid for that, but he said twenty-three hundred dollars for the covers. The thing that costs the most are the cranks for it, and we have the cranks. But it was twenty-three hundred dollars and then seventy-five dollars for freight fee.
Okay, let's, let's get the lifeguards hired first and then we can go more in general and in the depth of the pool. Anybody got any questions on lifeguards that Megan has got listed?
Chris, did you have another application turned in?
I don't think so. Just lately?
Yeah. It was a girl from, I think Colorado, that this summer living with her grandparents and she's gonna be going to college someplace, but...
I didn't see it.
Okay.
But we, remember, we, when did we, maybe we didn't shut this one off. Maybe we shut off the manager, didn't we, but that's it.
Well, keep us so posted.
I will do that.
If necessary. A motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the lifeguards for two thousand fifteen.
Second?
I'll second that.
Moved and, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Moved and seconded to approve the lifeguards as presented to the council for the two thousand fifteen pool year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Okay, now go a little more in depth if you would like on the pool a little bit, since we're discussing that.
Okay, we've had the tarps, the solar cover tarps for seven years and they're kinda like, they almost look like a packing peanut...
Bubbles.
Yep, packing bubbles, you know, and they're like a silver. They help keep the heat in when we're heating the pool. Also evaporation through the summer to keep more of the water in. And just the condition, like if you pull on them to try to cover, it'll just slice just right up the middle and it'll be pieces the next morning or, you know, they have to dive down to get pieces.
You shed these things, they look like little fish scales and they also, when I clean the filters, the whole filter pit is full of those little fish scale looking things.
I wondered what those were the first year that I was down there. I wondered what that was.
They're actually bubbles that help that float.
Help the tarps float.
Yeah, there's some on the chlorine to put the plastic up and...
They're toast. Sun's hard on it, too.
Yeah, sun's hard on it, too.
Yeah.
So they're not, the ones that we have are not actually doing the job they're supposed to do.
Oh, they can't even...
Right now, they're so ripped out that they don't even cover the pool completely.
I know, we always had gaps like that between some of them.
And they just keep ripping, ripping, like something you do, they're just so, they've gotten so worn out. Stan said that they actually sell covers to cover the covers because the sun eats off them and he thinks that's our problem. Ours have been sitting out in the sun.
Not when they're on the pool, but when they're...
When they're on the tarp, yeah.
When they're rolled up.
Yeah, when they're like rolled up on the rolls. And he says that they actually sell covers that you can put over them when they're sitting outside so that you don't have to reel them in, put them inside and reel them out every day and put them on and stuff like that.
Have you seen these covers that he's describing or?
No, but he says they just like they're, they're UV something covers and they just prevent the UV rays from getting...
Probably vinyl or something, you think?
What?
Vinyl, maybe or something.
I think they're the same.
I didn't ask too much.
I'm telling you, and you can ask Megan and Lindsay, I'm telling you, when I was down there helping the girls, it would take three girls to pull them tarps across, wouldn't it? Just, just to tart the damn thing. I mean, three and...
Well, there are a lot of tarps.
They had a lot, they had a lot more here than I got. I'll guarantee you that. They were strong. Cause it, they were some of guns.
Yeah, there's some, some guards can't even do it 'cause it's too much. There's only...
So this twenty-three hundred dollar cover then, did we ask them how long that would last?
I, the ones that we have, they have a ten-year warranty on them, but since they weren't stored properly, we can't see what the credit would be for the like quote-unquote refund of it, cause they weren't stored properly.
To store them properly, you have to buy the covers?
Well, and I don't, I would have to check. He didn't tell me any information on the like warranties or what it covered, but, you know, I don't know if it would be us just getting like a tarp when we put them in the shack just to cover them or when they're sitting up against the fence to cover them.
That's, that's when you need to have the tarp on there, is when they're off of the pool.
On the rollers.
So it could just be a simple tarp that we can purchase at Baumgars, you know, just to cover, to protect from...
I think if you're gonna try to do anything warranties, the only way you're gonna stand it is if everything goes through.
If you buy their covers.
Which I understand that, too. I mean, I wouldn't.
Sure.
I wouldn't wanna put a regular tarp on them because that's not UV approved.
Is there a possible grant for that, Chris?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I mean, it's something we're gonna have to buy. I just wanna make sure that we cover all of these.
And, and I can ask Stan a little more. He left me a voicemail 'cause I wasn't, he was on the road, he's on the road till Wednesday. So the people that he talked to, he couldn't get me a paper, Chris and myself a paper bid, so, you know, I, I would have to ask him, you know, what kind of warranty it, it holds.
See if he, if he can also send you a sample of what, what it is.
Cause if it's just like, you know, I would ask...
I don't wanna even send a sample. I mean, just, whether we do get it or don't, we're gonna, my eyes are gonna get it, so...
And I understand that. I just wanna make sure that we do right by the warranty this time.
Yeah.
Cause it's probably gonna go bad in seven years again and...
Well, the only reason I'd like to see a sample, because I know what, I know what our old ones look like. I know, I've worked with the old ones.
I doubt that a bit. I'm just saying, let's, don't screw these up, too.
But you, we had to cover them right?
When we got, when we got these lessons, I wasn't there, when did we, two thousand?
No, before my tenure.
It's just a lesson learned right now that we're gonna have to not do it again.
Yeah, see, I don't know if they like warned us of that or anything.
The thing, the thing with the warranty is it's, it's an eight-year warranty. It's prorated. So they're seven years old now. You're not gonna get anything out of them because they're prorated, but then we didn't store them correctly, so we're not gonna get anything.
We're not gonna get anything, yeah.
And they get abused by the wind and everything else, drug or drugs, they're kinda possible.
Sand and the, and the wind and the rain and...
Their main purpose is to heat the pool.
Yeah. But if, if they've lasted seven years without protection from the sun, who's to say they won't last ten, twelve years if we get that cover to put over them so the UV rays does not harm them?
That's true.
Cause these didn't have any, so we know what it did to them.
And if you think about it, we got the goodie out of them, I'll guarantee you that, for twenty-three hundred dollars. You know, I mean, they're not gonna last any more than ten years.
I mean, that's...
And it could cut, and it cuts back on the heating, the heater running.
Yeah, but we do need to get the covers, too.
Yeah, we gotta have the covers.
Right, I'm just saying, do it right, do it right.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what it's...
Yep, I'll, yeah, I'll double check.
Learn the lesson from what we've already done and do it right?
Yep, yeah, I'll, I'll double check with Stan of, of the warranties.
Get the information that we need.
Because you'll have to get more and more in cover.
There will be a total of six covers.
Yeah. Remember how many of our rollers that we roll, like you're gonna have to cover for one.
So we'll have to have some new rollers then?
Nope, no.
Oh, cause we always used to put two to one.
The roller is actually what is the most, is the expensive part. And since we have the cranks for it, the, the covers will go with those cranks, cause there are twenty-foot...
Two, two to, two, two to a roller, didn't you, Megan? And then we always had one roller that only had one on it, if I remember right.
Yes.
This is a baby pool.
Baby pool, we never had no cover of the baby pool.
No.
Okay. Thanks, girls. Appreciate it. You can go.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Discuss approved lot purchase opportunity.
Something we need to buy is...
We need to buy that?
Covers.
See, I think we gotta get some more information, or do you wanna go right into it?
No, we gotta, summer's gonna be half over, but then we'll worry about it.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna have to...
Okay.
We're gonna heat it now. We're gonna buy them anyway, so I make a motion to buy the covers. They will pay for themselves with heat.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you gotta have them.
Moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the covers for the pool at the city. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. Discuss approved lot purchase opportunity and I would entertain a motion to go in closed session.
I would move to go in closed session.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna...
Moved and seconded to go into closed session.
Hold on a second, Steve. Let me, let me talk for just a second. We're gonna go into closed session to discuss the purchase of particular real estate only when premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price to the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes and tape recording of the session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. So, once we vote to go into public session, I'm gonna shut this off. End it closed session, I'm sorry. I'm gonna shut this off. We'll go into closed session and then we'll start it up again.
Do I have to leave for them?
No.
No, neither one of you two have to leave because...
To the employees.
To the employees. So, now we need a vote.
I need a roll call vote. Rob?
Yeah.
Gary?
Yeah.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Regular session.
Yeah.
Back in regular session, I would approve, or I would a, want a motion to approve Resolution two thousand fifteen oh nine. And the resolution is to fix a date for a public hearing on a proposal to borrow money to purchase property.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution two zero one five dash zero nine.
Second, please?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty fifteen z- dash zero nine. Roll call vote, Rob?
Aye.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Okay, do you wanna set the date then for that?
That's already in the order.
This resolution does it.
Okay, thank you.
It's June eighth.
June eighth.
Yeah. Seven o'clock.
Okay. Discuss and approve Resolution two thousand fifteen ten, a resolution to open bank accounts at Bank Midwest. Discussion?
Yeah, what this is for is, what's changed on here since the last time you guys saw it was the cemetery checking account. The bottom line down there, Steve, Rob, Albert, myself and Lynn will be the signers. We've already got, we've already got the bank account open. Well, we don't, we don't already have it open. We have the paperwork started. When you guys approve this, then the, then the bank account will be open. We have to get Rob and we have to get Albert's signatures on this paperwork right over here.
I signed that the other day.
Not this one.
No.
We just got this one started.
Oh, okay.
Do I make a motion to approve Resolution two zero one five dash one zero?
I second it.
Moved and seconded to approve Resolution two thousand fifteen dash ten to open a bank account at Bank Midwest for the cemetery, correct?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Now you can pass that around. And my question to you is, do I need to sign here? Or is that you?
No, you.
Discuss ordinance two thousand fifteen dash oh one and ordinance amending title six, chapter five, section twelve, item number five of the two thousand code of ordinance, security light rate increase from four to ten dollars per month.
Per light, per month. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna read this first. I think we should read it. And then, I don't, I don't think we should waive this until the second reading. I think we should, I think we should wait and do this again at the next reading, just, just because it's easy to do. But what, what has changed is section number five, item number five. Customers with a security light of one seventy-five watts shall be charged ten dollars per month per light from four dollars per month per light. That's the only thing that's changing on here, so... So if you guys wanna accept this, what we need to do is... We need to approve...
The amendment to Resolution twenty, uh...
Just need to approve the ordinance.
Well, what we need to do is we need to introduce the ordinance and then approve the first reading.
Correct.
That needs to be, that needs to be what your motion says.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve two thousand fifteen oh one.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve...
To introduce.
To introduce the...
Ordinance two thousand fifteen oh one and approve the first reading.
Yep. Roll call, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron's absent.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
You are.
So if they go from one hundred seventy-five to down to one hundred fifty, they stay at four dollars a month?
Do we have some that are a hundred and fifty? I don't know, this is just what our, this is what our old one said was a hundred and seventy-five.
I guess they don't maintain, we do, so we're gonna put a hundred fifty watt bulb in it. Didn't you?
That's true.
Yeah.
You're gonna have one come up and say, well, I want a hundred fifty watt bulb, just wanna take four dollars a month.
Let's just take the four dollars off.
Everything a one person would probably do.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think what we'll do when that comes about is we, we maintain them. So we'll just, we just won't put a hundred and fifty watt bulb in there. We just, they can't do that.
Can we take out the hundred and seventy-five and just put on security light?
Just security light? Yeah?
I think that'd probably be better than specified bulb.
Right.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good idea.
Yeah, a lot better.
Any other discussion on that?
No.
Okay, you got discuss and approve. I don't think there's anything there. Do you have, Chris, or do you have something that goes in?
I don't have anything else. I just...
Okay.
Used last month's agenda.
How soon did you have to let Adam Ledford know about meals for Thursday? Was that today?
Tomorrow.
I don't know.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
It's at Tuesday.
It's at Alta, at the community center? And what they're we talking about is the ash...
Emerald ash borer.
Emerald ash borer, thank you.
Coming to your community soon.
I would tell you right now that Jay Stolberg took two of, or took one of his out, cause he didn't, wanted to maintain the cost of heat, and I don't know where he come up with these numbers, you'll have to ask him. He figured three hundred dollars a year to maintain that it wouldn't get hurt.
Yeah, once you start treating, you can't stop.
Okay, that'll be a very good one, yeah.
Once it gets to here, so the morning now, so...
And I know that his neighbors, Brent and Noni, have one or two there on their property. Francis, I don't remember.
Two, I think.
So...
They're all over town.
So, it sounded like a pretty good meeting. So, I know Albert and I are going.
It's just like saying we should kill all the turkey's chickens. Make sure they don't get the sun. Huh? It's kinda stupid to kill a tree just because it might get it. I think so, too. It's like killing everybody in the world, cause they might get cancer.
You just will wait till it gets it. Worry about it now.
I mean, it's a big tree. I understand that, like the nones like that, it's pretty healthy.
Well, I didn't know if anybody'd be interested in going, because I, I don't know if they've got ash trees on there.
I gotta check with the boss. Thursday night league, that's where I'm in trouble. Oh, you and your Thursday night league. Yeah, don't you wanna join?
You wanna send Jennifer Warren to a letter on board or a card?
Sure.
She emoted.
Oh, I think she can bail it now.
Oh, I didn't see her this morning. I know yesterday.
Doing?
Yeah.
I haven't been up there in a while.
Emoted once, but I bet it's getting bad again.
You can bail that one, too, can't you, Rick? That one's... Huh?
Who's the other?
Go in.
It's just north of Gus Cleveland's.
Two hours south of you. One of those vehicles there, so, yeah, I heard that she was... Anything else, Chris?
Yeah. Noel Cook called me about the tennis court. He said he would like to get one court done. If we would give him three thousand dollars, he can come up with the other fifteen hundred.
And I, we can do it out of fitness.
Yeah, but it's funny, he's gotta go the other way. Now he's backing up. I gotta kick out that deal. He's gonna match us and so now he's going the other direction. We say, here, we're gonna give you three, then you put three, and if that's where you're gonna do it, ain't all done. But it's funny how that started out the other way. Right, Rob?
He's never committed to doing the whole thing.
So what do you guys, I mean, what do you guys think about that deed? Is that, does it matter if they do one or both to you guys?
He's gonna take four thousand dollars just to do one, you say, think?
He originally told me it'd be eighty-five hundred dollars to do both courts, is what he thought, or eighty-eight hundred is what, is what he thought it would cost to do both courts, so...
Only three thousand to tear them out.
I like that idea.
Do what?
That's a bigger loser than the pool.
Three thou, Rick said it's like...
Put the pickleball court in, hell, everybody might play, so farts might play that. Well, another option is just sell it to him, if we, but we can't let him do that.
Lease it to him, Brady.
You can lease it to him, yeah.
Maybe we could lease it to him.
You can lease it to him.
Yeah, we leased the football field and the softball field right now to the school.
Yeah.
That might be an option, and let him do what he wants to do with it, Tim.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can get it. We got a lease agreement from, from Warren. We got just a generic one, I'm sure we could...
Because he was bellyaching that day we was up there. He wants to buy it. If we could lease it to him, then he could do what he wants to do with it. My take, when he says he'd, we'd throw in the deal, he'd throw in that. So then, hey, we're gonna fifty-fifty with you on the one court. That, I think that's fair. Cause he talked to you and that's what he proposed?
No, that's not what he proposed.
What he proposed then?
No, and I told him is I could, we could come up with three thousand dollars out of fitness account. And I said, if you wanna do the whole thing. And he said, well, we could get one court done, I could get the rest out number then. I said, whatever you wanna do. I said, one and Dennis are the only two that ever play up there.
Supposedly there's somebody else, too.
He said, there's kids that come up to you.
He's got, they've, they've got a couple of buddies that come down from some other city that play. But...
I'm like, Rick, I think that's worse than a swimming pool. Swimming pools, we don't maintain that, you gotta go to the pits and we're gonna have a drowning. They're not gonna drown, but...
People actually use the pools.
Yeah, that's right. I'm more interested spending money there than there. That's why I said, we'll go fifty-fifty, that's fair, see? That's not, that's fair, see? Well, I'll tell him, I'll walk down, we'll go fifty-fifty.
We got three thousand bucks in the fitness account.
We can use that at the pool, we can use that a lot places if we had to.
Yeah, July fourth, we're gonna be closed on the third instead of the fourth, cause the fourth is a Saturday.
What? Well, that was my next question. I was waiting to, to get in there, cause Jody Fisher was asking for it during July.
Yeah, so we'll do it on Friday before, on the third.
So we'll be closed on the third weekend and I can...
Oh, hell, he, he got an older meeting, great thing he's...
There is, there is no meeting next Monday because of Memorial Day. Hope everybody understands that. Next meeting will be June eighth, correct, Chris?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. So who made the motion to adjourn?
I'm just gonna say one thing, guys. You noticed how good that, they did the streets. They looked like they did a nice job. Let them comment on that. That was, Chris was on top of that, got that done and...
So were you guys.
Don't give me all the credit.
Well, whoever, whoever did the deal with it, it's, looks, it looks good, I think.
I like the corner up here by the fire station. That one really needed help.
Well, yeah, and then over the hill, down the Franny's, over the, over there, that was...
Over, over the hill down to Franny's house.
Down to Franny's house. But I mean, what we did, that needed.